Baltimore City Council Budget Appropriations meeting. We're concluding the hearing for Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero six five Ordinance of Estimates for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Joined to my left by Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the Seventh District, and Vice President of the City Council, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton from the Sixth District. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, staff from the Committee, and we are joined by Kara Cuntz from the Council President's Office, his Legislative Director. First panel is Economic Development with Baltimore Development Corporation and Planning as a Backup. Mr. Cole, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be back here today. Today, we're focusing on the BDC budget and items related to the BDC budget. I would like to do some very quick introductions, although I don't think it's necessary for you all, I want to make certain that my team who's assembled here is acknowledged. I'll start all the way at the end. We have Larissa Salamaca, who runs our Business Development Team. I'm skipping Paul Taylor because I'm going to introduce him separately in a second. We have Nancy Jordan Howard, who's Chief Operating Officer. Will Beckford, who manages our Neighborhood Development Team. Susan Yum, who does Communications and Government Relations. Jeff Pillis, who is our CFO, and of course, Kim Clark, the Executive Vice President of Mr. Chairman, I can run through these slides. I do have something to point out as we get through, and I'm sure you've noticed it in the budget, and that is related to Paul Taylor, who is currently the Executive Director of the Small Business Resource Center, which is a entity contained within BDC. With your permission, I'll just jump ahead to that slide. That's not it. Where is it? It may not be in here, which is fine, but it is in the service number eight twelve is the Small Business Resource Center. That service in its entirety is leaving BDC and moving to the Mayor's Office where Paul has been named, I think his title is still up in the air, but he will be taking over a combined office of the Small Business Resource Center along with the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-Owned Businesses. Is that correct, Paul? And am I correct that the title is yet to be resolved?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that service and the four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars will be moving over to the, I guess it's the Mayor's Office, whatever item it fits there. I will note, however, that there are rent commitments that are required by SBRC through the end of their term at Eastern High School on Thirty-Third Street. So, Paul is going to have to make certain that those rent payments are made. They are a subtenant of the Emerging Technology Centers at the Eastern High School site. We will likely end that lease at the end of two thousand and eighteen, so SBRC will be required to continue to pay that lease until at least the fall of eighteen. So, Paul's aware of that, but that's the biggest item that changes in my budget from this year to next year. There is a, and the Chairman is aware of this, there is a, in the budget, it makes it look as if there's a million-dollar increase to our operating budget. That's not an accurate representation. That's actually capital that is being used for another program and is not operating support for BDC, does not go into our staff support or anything of that like. It is for capital projects. And yeah, it is getting fixed, but it was too late before the budget book was printed. Mr. Chairman, at that point, I mean, if you want me to go through what's up here, I can, or we can jump right to questions. It's your call, sir.
If you want to run through it for a couple of minutes.
Sure. So, this is, we've got a couple of quick slides. The retention, expansion, attraction of businesses, obviously, it is our primary function. We are there to help the city grow jobs, to help businesses of all size expand here. Our goal, of course, is retention and expansion first. Attraction is in there, but it's not a function that we have a ton of money for. Many of you know that we do travel to ICSC annually on the retail attraction piece. Most of the other stuff, we partner with Department of Commerce and the Economic Alliance of Greater Baltimore and all of our other partners, GBC Downtown Partnership, Waterfront Partnership, in doing the business attraction piece. So, you can see that we have continued to provide assistance to businesses, and the number of jobs either attracted or retained, or retained, yeah, retained or attracted continues to stay in the thousands. I will say that Kim and I have spent a lot of time working post-transition report, working on ways to get even more of our team out on the street on a daily basis, and we think that these numbers may increase in the future as we find ways to get more interactions. Real estate development, this is our biggest item. Obviously, you know the scope of what we do around the city in assisting with real estate projects. You'll notice that there's a ninety-six-million-dollar number in two thousand and sixteen, fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. There were a lot of projects that closed, but they were smaller. You'll see the bigger projects in these numbers, as you see these vertical projects closing in the next couple of years, the millions will jump up significantly. But we continue to see a lot of great real estate activity in diverse areas throughout the city. It is not just concentrated in one neighborhood or one sector. We're seeing development all over. And then the last piece is the Inner Harbor Coordination. It's important to note that this is a pass-through in its entirety to the Waterfront Partnership of Baltimore. We continue to provide coordination services, but we partner with Laurie Schwartz and her team at Waterfront Partnership, and again, this is a one-hundred percent pass-through. We do not get any operating support for our Inner Harbor Coordination function any longer. We provide that directly to Laurie, and I think her team does a great job, and the numbers are there for that. We, we're very pleased with our relationship with Waterfront Partnership. They are moving forward with Rashfield redevelopment right now in a partnership with us and the city, and continue to look for ways to improve and upgrade the physical plant around infrastructure, around the harbor infrastructure. So, here's some, are these hours, too?
No.
That's planning?
It's planning.
Okay. So, that's it for our presentation, Mr. Chairman. Up to you how you want to proceed.
We've been joined by Council President Jack Young.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. I just had a couple of questions, and I don't know if it's necessarily related to service eight oh nine or eight ten, but can you talk a little bit, one of the critical issues in the city is the food access issue?
Sure.
And so, in a city where quarter of our residents live in food deserts, it's not just, it shouldn't just be specific to neighborhoods, it should be a citywide concern. So, can you talk about the efforts as it relates to, one, retaining the grocery that we currently have, because that's always challenged, but then also to attract new grocers to cities, especially distressed areas?
Thank you for the question, and as the Council President knows well from just getting back from ICSC, we all made grocery stores our number-one priority out there. We do have a food desert map that we watch very closely. I think you know Kristin Dawson. We are one of the few economic development, urban economic development agencies in the country that has a full-time dedicated food policy person, economic development staffer on-call, and Kristin does an amazing job of identifying sites, identifying challenges for those sites, and then trying to partner potential grocers with those sites. Most of them are privately owned, and, you know, we have the challenges of convincing a private property owner to do the right thing to make a site available. We've got the tax credit that the Council approved a couple of years ago that is geared toward attracting grocery stores to food deserts. We have one grocer so far take advantage of that tax credit. It's the Save-A-Lot on East Monument Street in East Baltimore. We believe that we have another one coming right now that is going to take advantage of that tax credit. We pitched every site we could identify, and we have them mapped out, and we pitched them to every grocer that we could find in the mid-Atlantic region. I don't think, Will, I don't think we missed a grocer that does business here when we were out in Vegas last week. So, we've pitched every one of those sites. We pitched the tax credit. The Mayor has asked that we continue to look at the incentives that we're providing in order to get grocers here, and right now, we haven't found anything else, but we will continue to explore and look at best practices around the country. I will say that right now, we believe we're on the leading edge of food desert policy when it comes to attraction. I think the biggest challenge when we're talking to these grocers is convincing them that there is sufficient buying power to support a grocery store in what they perceive to be an economically distressed neighborhood. Folks are buying groceries somewhere. If we are able to convince a grocer to take a risk, what they perceive to be a risk, I think that they will be successful. The Save-A-Lot that opened in East Baltimore is doing well. We know that the other grocery stores that are here are pleased with what, are pleased with what's happening, but, you know, I think we're, if there's other tools that are out there, we're going to use them. Right now, I think we have the right pieces in place, and again, it's more a function of educating these grocers on the benefits of moving in to these distressed neighborhoods that are a food desert to take advantage of the credits that exist. We were very encouraged, and I'm not going to get into the specific names of the grocers, but we were very encouraged, some of the grocery chains are absolutely interested in Baltimore right now, and we hope, we hope that sometime this calendar year, that we'll have a couple more announcements for locations. Sites, obviously, the one, I'm, there's no secret, Madison Park North is a high priority for us. We want a grocery store there or right near there. We've got sites in East and West Baltimore that are in the heart of food deserts that we would like to fill in, and we also have some sites that are in the, kind of the outer perimeters of downtown that would suit, that would serve food deserts, and so, we'll continue to market those.
I still have some other questions, but Council President also has some questions on food access.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair. Good morning, Mr. Cole. I was very disheartened in Vegas that we didn't present as a team. You know, I take my team there every year. You guys can't do nothing without me and my team, and it was very disheartening that we could not be together to talk to these grocers, because we talked to grocers, too. We talked to a lot of developers as well, and it's very disheartening when you see Washington DC, Prince George County, and their team working as a team. I just want to let you know it's disheartening, and next year, if it happens, I don't know what we're going to do, because you guys can't do nothing without this body, and if that's the way we're going to be treated, like we're treated with the Rollins Blake Administration, y'all are going to have a tough road to toll, okay? I'm just letting you know. I didn't like it, it didn't sit well with the Vice Chair, I mean, the Chair of the Taxation and Finance Committee, it didn't sit well with the land use person. If we're going to be a team, we need to be a team, so that we all, I took them there so that people know that we all going to work as a team. I got the taxation personnel, the land use, and we're going to work with you guys to move these projects along. No TIPS, no POLIS, no nothing can move without this council. So, y'all need to get that back to the Mayor or whoever, because we did our best to try to coordinate with you guys, and it just didn't happen, and I just want to let you know, I don't like it, and if it continues, y'all are going to have problems getting stuff through.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair, may I make just a comment that piggybacks on that statement?
Please, ma'am.
And I guess, as you know, that was my first time there as well, and I do share sentiments that our President just shared, but I just wanted to add, too, that also was kind of disheartening to me was when, you know, Prince George's County had an actual formatted program with, that had shared, it was shared, it was, it was a partnership with a count, a visual. It was a visual partnership with their council, and it, it had projects for every council district and included the council members. It was a clear visual partnership, and, you know, I'm yielding to say that is something that we probably really need to work on, because we're, we're kind of all in this together, and we all are working to service constituents and the taxpayers, and it not only, you know, the people in communities see the disconnect, and I, I think with the President is, you know, don't take it like, I mean, he's, he's reached, we're all trying to reach out, and we want to work together.
I understand completely.
So, could you comment on, I guess, I'd like to know maybe what, because it was my first time, I'd like to know maybe what was missing and why there was not the actual partnership there.
Yeah, because, Bill, we're going to give you the packet that we got from Prince George County, because I don't want to start no little mini wars and not let anything get through, because I'm almost at that point, because I'm seeing the ah, 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 not the wee, wee, wee.
So, the one difference, I think, to the Vice President, the one thing that is a little different is that Baltimore actually has a booth. We actually have a physical, I don't know if you made it over the convention hall.
It wasn't common.
Okay. Okay. Well, we have, we have a-
We wasn't a part of it, so we felt that, I felt that we should not be there. We're not invited.
We were definitely at the convention center, but I didn't know anything about a booth.
Yeah, we have a, we have a booth that is fully programmed from the moment the convention opens until it closes, so Monday to Wednesday, and this year, we actually revamped the booth to accommodate more meeting space so that developers and/or landowners could come in and meet with potential retail tenants in our booth. We rebranded it. It was a much cleaner look this year, and, Mr. President, I mean, I will, first of all, thank you personally, because we've had an outstanding partnership. You have always been a great partner to BDC. The council as a whole has been a great partner to BDC, so I hope that nothing changes with that. I certainly know that everything we do is in a partnership and requires your, your direct assistance. Nothing that we do can be done in a vacuum. Everything is done in partnership, and I agree with you. We will, we will work together to figure out how to make that better. I will say that the scheduling of the booth is one of the more challenging things we face, because you've got all of these national retailers that are marching to the beat of their own drum, and we're just trying to fit them in, but we were able to get to every retailer, and in fact, many that we met with had met with you as well, and were very clear that the message was consistent, so I'm sure we can always do more to make certain that it is, is better coordinated.
And just to add, your, your presentation about the food access and Vice Chair Pinkett had, you know, mentioned, I guess, stretching out in other neighborhoods, that's a chance, too, to kind of do a part and listen to the council members of the areas outside of downtown, because they're in those communities every day. I myself, particularly in the, you know, Park Heights area, it's, it's still, that's a food desert still, even though we do, you mentioned Save-A-Lot, and that is doing well in that one little section, but there's still a need. The Food Bank, by the way, has been very helpful in, in all of our neighborhoods, and I know that's one of the items that's on our agenda to continue to get funding for. I mean, they have been, and they do extra things for Baltimore City, but on that note, I got an "i" down here, so I'll stop. Oh, okay.
I just wanted to add to that, Councilwoman. I think we're all very pleased that the Food Bank is something that the Mayor's Administration is very interested in funding this year, so we certainly appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. I'll stop there.
Excuse me. So, I wanted to go back to food access, but I do want to kind of dovetail on something that both Council President and Council Vice President said, and I believe BDC does a good job of it, but I would, I would say that we could probably do a little bit more, is that oftentimes, ICSC is the culmination of work that happens during the course of the year, and so, I think that maybe we can do a little bit better, the work leading up to ICSC to make certain that all of the council persons and council districts feel like, even if they don't go, they're going to, you know, Vegas with the, with the group, and clearly identify priorities so that council persons are working on those issues and identifying those issues even prior to the presentation, so I would encourage more of that to happen as well. I don't have it in front of me, but I wanted to go back to food access. Can you, can you talk a little bit about any capital dollars committed to, to that effort? Just speaking from West Baltimore, and I'm not trying to be specific, it appears a lot of our efforts would require that we have dollars, maybe even to get site control, in order to attract grocers, and so, you all can go to Vegas as much as you want, you can be the best recruiter, but if there's not a development opportunity already present, or you don't have the ability to identify parcels and, and acquire them, then it kind of handcuffs your efforts. So, are there dollars that, capital dollars that are also going, committed to, to this effort so that it's a, it's a comprehensive?
Yeah, we don't have any specific dedicated capital dollars for that purpose. I will say that I think you know, yeah, Ms. Clark was saying, nor do we have the authority. I do, I do think that it requires additional conversation, because I feel, as you do, that that may be a tool that we're lacking right now. That said, I think you know well, if we had a grocer that came to us and said that they needed X, Y, and Z in order to open a store, and they had the site, that I think that we would, just as they did in Howard's Park, just as they've done, I think you were involved in the Save-A-Lot on Pennsylvania Avenue in making some things happen there. I think the city and BDC have demonstrated the capacity to fill those smaller gaps in infrastructure to help a grocery store open, but we don't have the funding to do site acquisition, site preparation, unless it is already city-owned, and even then, it would be tough to come up with the capital. It's a limited budget. I mean, I think it, I think it's a conversation we should continue, because I agree.
And part of the reason I brought it up is because I don't know if, if there's a great appreciation for the fact that if we don't have those capital dollars in place, I mean, Howard Park doesn't happen.
Right.
I mean, matter of fact, you know, like you said, Pennsylvania Avenue Save-A-Lot doesn't happen because of the other things that had, you know, had to happen, so recruitment is only one, one part of it. At some point, you know, BDC has to have the ability to fulfill the development part of your name, or we won't get, we won't get certain businesses, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Also, I'm also hearing, and are there dollars committed to, a lot of times, there has to be market studies done in order to attract businesses, either by the businesses or by the, you know, communities that are trying to attract. Are there, are we able to identify resources to assist? And I'm, I'm speaking of a specific example, I know of one grocer, small grocer, that's, you know, now looking, but in order to really take that next step, they're going to have to do a market study.
This is the DC grocer?
Yeah. And so, if we don't, at some point, we might have to subsidize some of those efforts in our recruiting, and I'm just, I'm just trying to see what-
I think it's a conversation we should have, because I do agree with you. We also had an interesting meeting with EDA earlier this week, and it might be a great project for them if we can come up with the right proposal, because they will fund studies. They made it clear to us that they will absolutely fund studies. So, yeah, agreed, and I think we'd have to take it, obviously, on a case-by-case basis, because we don't want to, we don't want to spend money on national retailers that have the capacity to do it themselves.
Thank you. I do have a couple of other questions. This one's specific to service eight ten. I'm looking at the outcome measure related to total taxes at FASN generated by BDC-controlled development projects, and so, for FY sixteen, the actual is seven hundred and thirty thousand, where the target is five million, was five million. Can we talk a little bit about what, what happened where our target was five million?
I think it's just related to building closings. You're coming out of a rough April of two thousand and fifteen, and some of these projects slowed, and that's why you'll see a bigger bump in fiscal year seventeen.
Okay.
So, you know, I think it's just a snapshot at a point in time and isn't necessarily something that is indicative of a problem, given the fact that we know what's closed already in calendar seventeen and what's going to close in eighteen. You know, it's just a blip, a snapshot in time, and it also was related to projects in the pipeline at that time. We had a lot of the small stuff in the pipeline, none of the big chunky stuff like Harbor Point Buildings and things like that.
If I can keep rolling. Service eight eleven, Inner Harbor Coordination, and I don't know a lot about this yet, but I'm, I believe that there is a proposal to expand the Waterfront Partnership?
So, I think the Councilman from the First District has a, I think he's got legislation in right now to expand the Waterfront Partnership to the Fells Point Business District. I haven't looked at the boundaries yet, but I know that that is the, that is his goal, and so, the Waterfront Partnership boundaries would expand up to include the Fells Point Business District along Thames and Broadway. Same, same type of expansion that we've seen in Midtown and Downtown over the years. What? Yeah, this, this has nothing to do with that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no. This service is, again, a pass-through to provide the, they provide the services, the actual services around the Inner Harbor proper, and, and as I mentioned, they're managing the Rashfield Redevelopment Project. They've taken over a lot of the day-to-day activities on behalf of the city over the years, and frankly, we've had a number of meetings with other city agencies about services that have been cut back over the years that Waterfront Partnership has picked up related to cleaning, sweeping, small maintenance projects. They've, they've taken that task on, and the city has stepped back, and this number, by the way, has gone down. I think at one point, it was at four fifty and is down to three sixty-four.
Yeah, and so, I guess that's probably what I was getting to. Do we anticipate with this potential expansion that this number will go up or will go down?
We, we don't think it's going to be affected at all, because this is literally for the Inner Harbor proper.
Okay.
This would not affect, I mean, they could expand all the way to Canton, and this wouldn't be affected by it. They are budgeting the expansion over there based upon the tax, tax dollars that it will generate. It has no effect on the Inner Harbor Coordination.
Okay. Got you. One, one other question, this is related to service eight twelve, Small Business Resource Center, and just so I'm clear, so the SBRC is going to leave Thirty-Third Street, and it's going to be housed-
No.
Oh, it's not-
No, let me, let me, let me walk through that again. So, at the end of this fiscal year, the Small Business Resource Center will be sent to city government, and Paul, I think, will be physically located at City Hall. SBRC will continue to operate on Thirty-Third Street until that lease expires. Paul and I have had a lot of conversations, there will be a need to have an SBRC location somewhere, and so, when that lease is up, we'll have that conversation, but it won't be a BDC entity anymore. I know that the Mayor would love to see it in a neighborhood somewhere, and we agree. Small Business Resource Center? What?
The lease is mine.
No, no, I understand that, but that lease is going to expire. We, we're not going to be able to stay there after the end of eighteen, so- So, finding a Main Street location or something like that that is affordable would be the next likely step there, but it will continue to operate at 33rd Street until that lease is, is gone.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I haven't been shy about the fact that when both the lease for SBRC and ETC expire, that, you know, similar to what happened in Canton and also on Haven Street, where the ETC, you know, provided some economic catalysts to, to those communities, that I, I really think that both the SBRC and the ETC provides an opportunity for the city to, to bring some economic stimulus to areas where we're, we're challenged. And, you know, not unlike, you know, you know, what on a grander level has happened in DC where they've used their, some of their government entities to bring economic vitality to areas. I, I really think that we really should be exploring, you know, when those leases expire, you know, what will be the future of, you know, SBRC and what will be the future of ETC, because, you know, you know, I, I don't wanna, I mean, obviously, I represent a portion of West Baltimore, so I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to West Baltimore, but, but regardless whether it's West Baltimore or some other section of the city, there, there is great potential for economic development around, especially around ETC. I mean, it is, you know, if, if we wanna talk about economic models in our city, it is, it's, it's served to be a proven model.
Seen it happen twice.
Yeah, and so, I, I, I think we should be rolling the dice a third time because it, it, it can yield great benefits.
Yep.
And so, you know, I don't, you know, obviously, we have more discussions later, but I think it's a discussion that should be a priority of the administration on, you know, what will be the next iteration of these two entities and how, how can we maximize them?
Agreed. We agree. Paul? Paul agrees. We all agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Bill, one of the things that's come up is the, the number of surplus schools that we have, and it seems that DGS and Planning haven't really come up with a plan per se for what to do with those buildings. Do you think that's something that BDC, with your guys' technical expertise, could assist them with in terms of identifying development opportunities?
Yeah, I don't think that's a fair assessment. We, we have been plugged in. Kim, and virtually everybody here has been participating in that program, project, to analyze each school. We've put together a handful of, of analyses already for various schools of what might be an adaptive reuse. Some of these schools are in the middle, dead set in the middle of neighborhoods, so a business use may not make a lot of sense, but I don't think it's fair to say that Planning and, and DGS haven't engaged us because they certainly have. Kim?
Well, I, I think what I was saying was that they don't seem to have plans, and what you're saying today is certainly news.
We're, we're working, we're working on helping identify opportunities.
Yeah, DGS and Planning were in here yesterday, and they said nothing of the sort when this, when this topic came up, so.
See, I speak up all the time, you know. So, there's a surplus school committee. It's made up of several different city agencies, and it's either an agency head or a deputy that sits on the committee. BDC's participation has been to advise on future uses, but we also are currently doing assessments on five of the most immediate closures, and that's assessing whether, you know, what would it cost to do residential, what would it cost to do office, what would it cost to have a city agency locate there. So, we're in the process, we've got two that are to be completed by June 30th, and then we'll continue to work on them. We have three different staff people working on these right now. So, you know, we're saving the city some money so that they don't have to hire a consultant, and our savvy people are working on it, but they take a little bit of time to complete to get all the background information, but they're currently being worked on, and we should have two of them by June 30th.
When you have those assessments, can you provide those to us?
Sure.
Thanks.
Council President?
Thank you.
And we've been joined by Councilwoman Clark from the 14th and Councilwoman Sneed from the 13th.
Bill, I want to give you what we were talking about with Prince George County does with their folk. You can see the councilperson and everything that's available in their district.
And I just want to mention, I, I think if Councilman Bullock was here, he, he would bring it up. I think that there, and I don't, I think the school's name is Abinson, but I'm not really sure, in, in his district, where there's a present opportunity, the school, it's not Abinson. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Is not an opportunity for anything.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's the wrong name. I'm sorry, it's the wrong, sorry, wrong name, sorry, excuse me. We will make certain that you get the proper name, but he has a school that's closing in his district near West Side Shopping Center. He, the ninth district. And, and, and it's an opportunity that the timeframe that that school is vacant could be, that building is vacant could be really, okay.
We're on that one.
Yeah, thank you.
Does that school have a bond debt on it?
So, the surplus school committee has a list of all the school, the surplus schools, the ones that have been surplus, the ones that are to be surplus, and there's a matrix available that I can send to your office that, that lists the debt on it, and for any of the ones that are like promote, proposed demolition, it also has the cost of demolition. So, I can send that to your office.
Councilwoman Clark?
Hi, well, first of all, I want to thank you very much for, personally, Mr. Cole, for helping us expedite the facade process on Waverly Main Street. We've got a great director there, as you know.
Yep.
Emily, and she's really getting all those contracts in as fast as she can so we can look better, and I guess we just got too much in too fast and maybe not in, in exactly the proper order.
There, there was some missing documents. We, as you know, I went out and met with Emily, we got it straight, and everything's moving.
Everything's been great ever since, and it means a lot to us because we're really pushing hard to get this thing turned around.
We, we like doing facade improvement grants, we really do.
I know, and, and there aren't a lot of people going for them, so we want them all. Okay, so, that was the nice thing. I, I have no complaints, but I'd never heard about that the Small Business Center was leaving 33rd Street, and I would hope that they, and that is a neighborhood.
I understand.
But, all I would say is, speaking of Waverly Main Street, like, we've got Uncle Lee's coming online, we should be so lucky. And we have opportunities right there on Main Street where people could just take a bus and get off and really have an opportunity there, and it would help us greatly to have that kind of a prospect, and it's, it's certainly sizable enough, and so, I hope that you will consider that when you're looking at buildings because we've been through, we have, people have been through a lot to finally get that free. Second, third, and we have two more, just, I know you were talking about grocery stores, let me just say that Morgan State University is, I mean, there, it's like, it's like a winter wonderland or something there on Argon Drive at Hillen Road. They've got, they built a bridge across Hillen, and they've got two gorgeous buildings, I mean, best architecture in Baltimore as far as I'm concerned, and they've got two big new buildings and parking and all that jazz and matas. The problem is, the decades-old, generations-old ownership of the West Side requires development, and one of the sticking points is we need a grocery store. Now, I guess, here's what I'm asking. Several years ago, when we did a charrette about the Northwood Shopping Center, and that time, we did the whole center because Morgan hadn't stepped in, we're glad they're there because part of the, the, the development of the private one, center is, will include bookstore and coffee shop and all that good stuff that is like flows from the Morgan influence. But, we're not a food desert, but what we've got is a demography that I saw back when we did a charrette that Jill did that was better than, in terms of economics, the demography around Belvedere Square and mean how much people earn. And there's no reason that we can't attract a decent grocery store to that location, and I know the president worked on that when he was in Las Vegas, but we, we just need a decent grocery store to help hold that whole community together and get that development off the, the pad.
We could not agree with you more.
Oh.
Could not agree with you more. We have worked very closely with the, is he the contract purchaser?
Rembon?
Yeah, with, with, with Mark.
Yeah, he's the.
For several years. We've also spent, and, and Ms. Clark has spent an inordinate amount of time doing a lot of hand-holding with the necessary parties at Morgan.
Oh, my lord, yes.
Because they would like to move forward with a RISE zone.
With the what?
RISE zone, which is a, a, a incentive zone that will help redevelop Northwood.
Oh.
And that is heading your way very soon.
Oh, lord, please.
Resolution is coming to the council in the next couple of weeks.
Probably next week.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, so we're teeing up the entitlements that will unlock the additional benefits necessary to.
And that's been applied to Northwood?
It is for Northwood.
It's for Northwood?
It is for Northwood.
So.
It's the second RISE zone in the city. The UMB Bio Park is the first. RISE zones were created by the state legislature four and a half years ago. In fact, Mayor Pugh was the sponsor of the legislation in the Senate.
Whoa, good.
It creates, using an anchor institution, it creates all the benefits of an enterprise zone for an area that doesn't qualify for an enterprise zone.
Ah.
So, this unlocks the key that is necessary to redevelop Northwood, and we are about to send it to your chambers.
Good.
Once that is done, then it removes a significant number of obstacles, and I think, we, I think we all believe that Northwood is ready, very ready to go.
It's overdue.
We know that there is legitimate retail interest there, and we believe that a grocery store is critical to the redevelopment of that center.
And the neighborhood.
And the neighborhood. Everything you've said, couldn't agree more. We're doing everything we can on our end. Kim, do you have anything you want to add?
Mike phone.
So, the council president was also instrumental in getting Morgan interested in this RISE zone. One of the problems with Northwood is that it didn't meet the criteria for an enterprise zone, for the enterprise zone tax credits. So, we've always been looking for a tool to use at Northwood, for a developer to use at Northwood. Northwood's near and dear to my heart. I got my first Holy Communion dress at Northwood Shopping Center.
Did that come to me?
No, at that Little Newman's next door.
Oh.
So, we have finally, Morgan has been able to move along, and we have the application ready. It's a two-part application. Part of the application involves a city council resolution. We're setting up briefings now to brief the council president, the local council folks.
Council endorsing.
Right, and so, then we hope to get it introduced, I mean, it'll probably be sent over to be introduced as early as, early next week.
So, that's great, thank you. And last but not least, I have two empty school buildings in my district, both in crucial locations. Paquin, which DOT was gonna take over, but with the change of administration, I think they ran out of the money to make the transfer, and they had a nice MOU with the community. So, and then Waverly, the, the old Venable Vocational Building, okay? So, I'm working on them. I just want to say, say those two names because in both cases, there's interest in some kind of development that would meet direct community needs, but of course, we don't have the money. We're looking for guardian angels.
I, I walked through Paquin two weeks ago for the first time and was stunned at how much had been stolen out of it before it was secured.
It was a beautifully well-kept little school with very nicely designed space. It has a, it was for pregnant girls that came out of their high schools, went there, got their babies, got a nursery, got prenatal care, went back and graduated from their home schools, and then what happened was, per student funding.
Sure.
So, none of the schools wanted to give them up, and everybody said, it's okay now, it doesn't matter, and it finally, we've kept it open for a long time, but it finally closed down. There is interest, as there must be, again.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's great bones, that building has great bones. It, it structurally is solid. It's just that everything on the inside has been, for the most part, all the valuable stuff was gutted. They do have security there now. I mean, the building is very well-secured now. Unfortunately, in that gap between when it was vacated and when whoever was responsible for securing it took over, vandals did a, a number on it. So, it's a great building, though. I, I love that building.
We would like a community center there with, with a anchor tenant.
Sure.
Councilwoman, can you use the microphone, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Recorded.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. We've been joined by Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District, Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District, Councilman Robert Stokes from the 12th District. I just want to remind my colleagues that we are four minutes past when this panel was supposed to end. We have two more questions. Councilwoman Sneed, and then Councilman Scott, if you could ask your questions as expeditiously as possible, I would greatly appreciate it. Councilwoman Sneed?
Thank you.
Good morning. I just want to, a quick question. The mayor has talked about putting more money into neighborhoods and, instead of downtown, and I just look at you guys as the turnaround story, and with this new school coming in the 13th District, but a number of schools coming, I'm wondering how much money will be allocated to these additional, to these districts around the, the schools to kind of build up when we talk about restaurants and we talk about turning around neighborhoods?
I, I would not be able to answer that. We don't have budgets for things like that. There was a, a question that Councilman Pinkett asked earlier about capital to spend to make development sites available. That's not something we have. So, what we do is, if we identify opportunities, we will work very closely with a developer or a community development corporation to try to find capital, but we don't have a ready pot of capital to spend to do site prep or prop, we, we can't do land acquisition. You know, we, we have the capacity, we have the capacity to provide the services, meaning we can help somebody get from concept to opening, but we don't have the capacity, we don't have a bucket of money to do site acquisition, prep, development, those types of things.
And my second question is.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, I just want, hello?
Oh.
Just wanted, I don't know why Planning isn't here, but their INSPIRE program is, oh, well, maybe they can speak to it. The INSPIRE program is for at least planning for development around the new schools, so I think Planning could better respond to your question.
Okay, thank you. And the second question, I'm just curious, do you guys keep stats or data on around the city of how many vacant properties or vacant storefronts along the main streets or just in different districts that you guys have turned into or introduced business owners to move in? Like, is there a stats that we keep that?
I'm sure we can come together. The biggest issue we face is that it's gotta be north of 98% of the vacant storefronts are privately owned. So, we work very, very closely with housing, code enforcement, in trying to incentivize the property owner, trying to use the delicate terms, incentivize the property owner to do the right thing, because we can find the retail tenant that may want to go in, but if you don't have a willing property owner that's willing to lease the space, upgrade it, bring it up to code, and do all those things, you know, we've, we've, we've dealt with it in every single one of our key retail districts and commercial corridors, the vast majority of the properties are privately owned. If it's city-owned, we want rid of it as quickly as possible. We want it in the hands of somebody who can actually put something in it. So, I mean, we can look and see, I know in our, in every one of our commercial corridors, we have our, our hits, our targets, so I can, statistically, I don't know how I could break it down for you, but we could try to find some way to be responsive.
Thank you, that's it, Chairman.
Thank you. That's it, Chairman.
Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you said that I should ask my questions as slowly as possible. Actually, I don't, I have one question, one comment. Mr. Councilman, welcome back to City Hall and to the City Council. I just want to say that your folks and you are a pleasure to work with, and thank you for all you do for the city. And my question is actually simply for you, sir, is it, now, I understand that the debate is over, who's the best soccer player in the Cole household?
Yeah, Will wins that one easily. Thank you.
I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We're going to move on to small and disadvantaged businesses. BDC, Department of Law Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, and the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-Owned Business Development. Those two offices seem redundant, but...
So, Mr. Chairman, what I'm going to do, given what I've just informed the council about the Small Business Resource Center moving into City Hall, and that entire budget in fiscal year 18, moving over here under Paul's watch, I'm going to invite Paul up here, Paul Taylor, to come up. We will be here to support in any way we can, but I think it's best to turn it over to Paul Taylor.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council President and members. I really don't have a, a clear sense of the, the budget yet and all of the details, but I can answer any questions as best I can.
Do we have a representative from those other two entities, the Department of Laws? Can you just come up and grab a seat and introduce yourself, please? So, you're with the Department of Laws Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office?
Yes.
What's your name?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Council President, honorable members. I'm Courtney Billis. I'm chief of the Minority Women's Business Opportunity Office and the city's law department. We're essentially charged with running the city's minority business enterprise program.
Okay. And then, do we have someone from the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-Owned Business Development? That's you?
Yes. So, so what, what the mayor is attempting to do is to consolidate some of these offices. So, the Small Business Resource Center will be consolidated with the Minority and Women's Business Office to operate on, as one entity. And that's a new initiative that the mayor's putting in place right now.
Okay.
Mr. ...
Do you guys have a presentation?
We, just for personal...
Just a slide? That's okay.
Yeah, yeah, just, I think that's a slide that was presented by the law department in terms of outcome. We certainly, we didn't ask for any change in our budget. Our budget is strictly salaries. There's no extra funding for any other initiatives. So, essentially, our office does three things. Certification of minority women...
Can you talk to the mic, sir?
Sure. Our, our office essentially does three things. We certify minority and women-owned businesses for the city of Baltimore. The city of Baltimore has its own certification. We don't accept certification from any other jurisdiction, including MDOT. Now, the second tranche is goal-setting on contracts, on a contract-by-contract basis, based on the scope of work and availability of certified minority and women-owned firms. We also set goals on private development projects. The discretionary portion of the budget, we apply our annual 27%, 27% MB goal and 10% WB goal to those private development projects. And then finally, our, our last issue is compliance, making sure that the city, MBs and WBEs, as well as our prime contracts, are compliant with Article 5, Subtitle 28, which is our MB law. And as distinct from the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women's Business Development, they have kind of a macro, kind of a macro sense in terms of overall business development for the cities and what kind of initiatives and technical systems they can provide small business owners. But my office is relatively narrowly defined in terms of enforcing Article 5, Subtitle 28. So, just for personal consideration.
Where's, where's Mr. Klein?
I believe he just stepped out.
Thank you.
So, if, if you'd like, before we answer questions, we can just look at the, we can look at the slide.
We're, we're, I think we'll just get right into questions. Councilman Pinkett?
So, thank you. So, my, my first question related to Service 869, is it, and I'm looking at output, output measure related to the number of MB, WBE certified businesses. So, am I correct that in order for a business to be certified in the city, they have to have some kind of presence in the city, whether it be an office located in the city?
It's not the city, it's the Baltimore market area, which has been determined to be Baltimore City and the six surrounding counties. So, if that office is located in the six surrounding counties, Baltimore County, Harford, Howard, Carroll, Queen Anne's, Antirundale, and Baltimore City are the seven jurisdictions where you have to have a independent operating office.
Okay. Because I think we might have gotten some bad information yesterday, because I, I thought it was said that the office had to be located in the city. And so, my, my reply was, where are they? Because there, there is not 1,100 MB, WBE offices in the city of Baltimore. Do we know how many of the ones that are certified are actually located in the city?
We can call the database, I can get that information to you relatively quickly.
So, so we, we'd like to get the number of, that are actually certified in the city. Another question I had is related to the, the process or the engagement that MBO has with our individual city agencies. And, and to be specific, I think yesterday, we, we had testimony from, for example, DPW. And in the, in the instance of DPW, there was, in 2002, there's 1.5 billion that's supposed to go to address a consent decree related to infrastructure. And then there's another, maybe 300 million to the Ashburton Reservoir, and then another 300 million to the Droid Reservoir. And so, I'm seeing all of this investment, this capital investment that we're making in the city, it should be yielding, from my perspective, more firms, not just sub, but, you know, prom firms in the MB, MBWBE, but MB. And, and so, I'm, I'm wondering, how does, you know, how does that engagement happen with DPW? Because this is, it would be different if this was like a three-year projects or maybe five-year, we're talking about 15, 20-year projects. So, we can't keep coming back saying that we haven't developed MBs to address, you know, these particular, you know, activities. You know, we, we know that DPW is going consistently to have the lion's share of our capital dollars. And so, I'm, I'm just curious, at what point do we really start developing, you know, minority firms so that they are growing as a result of all this investment that the city is making in infrastructure? And I'm quite, I know that you all are doing work, and I'm not, not saying that you all aren't doing what you need, but it just seems like we need to be doing more. Because, you know, $2 billion of investment should be changing our city more than it is. We're not, I, the economic position of Baltimore does not reflect $2 billion of investment in infrastructure. Now, the surrounding metro area is reflecting the $2 billion of our investment, but we're not seeing it. And so, I, I'm just trying to figure out, at what point do we make certain that that, that the city is being properly invested, and the businesses that are committed to the city are being benefited from the dollars that we continually invest? And I'm sorry, I was kind of long, but...
No, I, I think you're making an important point. I mean, it's not every day that you have a project like Port Covington, or the Exelon Building, or the Inner Harbor, these, these projects that, you know, aren't going to be done in one year, or three years, or five years. This is, these are supposed to be game changers.
Yeah.
And the fact of the matter is, we can always do more. With respect to the, the consent decree work, my experience has been that DPW's done a pretty good job in terms of outreach. Whenever they have events, I'm always present. I, I, you know, provide whatever support I can. I'm always encouraging businesses that aren't certified to get certified. And we also look at categories where we have less availability. There's certain fields that have less ability. So, particularly when it comes to some of the environmental stuff, where you're talking about, this, you have environmental stuff, we don't have the same availability as we do in, say, construction or architecture and engineering. So, we just recently, there was a firm that was based in Prince George's County that has come to Baltimore and has the ability to take advantage of some of this consent decree work. Now, that's just one, but I mean, there are more. But I think you're absolutely right. These are not everyday opportunities in terms of capital investment. And if you don't capture these dollars now, you know, on a contract-by-contract basis, or a few hundred thousand dollars, or a few hundred thousand dollars there, and as you said, subcontracting opportunities, not prime contracting opportunities, you know, that's, that's absolutely what has to happen. So, again, the, the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women's Business Development does outreach and does conceptualize plans to increase participation. You know, my office's, my office's role is to make sure that whatever goal is set on a contract is adhered to.
Right.
And we make sure we have enough firms, you know, that are available to perform that work. So, I, I, I certainly, I certainly can't disagree with anything that you've said. And again, I've made it very, very clear, not just with these, not just with our, our contracts, but these private development projects.
Yes.
These are huge game changers. So, you know, I've been intimately involved in, in Port Covington, and I have gone to at least three or four jurisdictions in our Baltimore market area to talk to folks, and, and if they're not certified with the city of Baltimore, to get them certified.
Right.
And, and one thing I did want to just, just point out quickly, we don't accept certifications from, from other jurisdictions. We've got our own specific law, because our marketplace has been defined by the Baltimore market area, whereas the state of Maryland, they have a national marketplace. So, we can't redress racial discrimination for a Latino firm in Minneapolis.
Right.
You know, so, so, so we're limited in terms of that. So, the operating office has been a barrier for small firms to get certified. You know, for them to invest in an office in Baltimore when they already have an office location with the hope of getting work with the city, you know, unless you have a lot of resources, that capital investment is tough for small firms. That's been a disadvantage. So, but we do need to increase the number of firms. So, what we are doing now is, the mayor had asked, "Well, why can't we accept the Maryland Department of Transit certification?" Well, for constitutional reasons, we, we can't open up the certification to everybody. It has been a strict market. So, what we've done is, we've called the MDOT database of certified firms for the firms in our Baltimore market area, the six counties of Baltimore City. We're going to cross-reference that with our database, eliminate the firms that are already certified with our city. There's about 21, 2,100 firms that are certified with MDOT in our Baltimore market area. By the end of this week, we'll get down to the number of firms that are, that are already certified with Baltimore City. We're going to notify each of those firms that is located in our market area that's been certified with MDOT, that is not certified with us. If they've been certified with MDOT within the last year, and we also have a restriction in our law, you have to be in operation for 12 months. MDOT, there's no such requirement. But if they have been certified with MDOT in the, within the last year, they've been in operation for 12 months, we will allow them to submit a tax return, their MDOT certification, and they can have a one-page affidavit that says there's been no changes to their MDOT certification. And I think it will result in several hundred new firms being certified with the city, which would be a huge game changer for us, as opposed to one application at a time. So, that's one of the initiatives that I think is just a smart way to increase the number of availability to firms. Because part of the problem is, you know, we set our goals, the, the denominator is all available firms, minority, non-minority. The numerator is the number of minority firms or the number of women-owned business enterprises. The problem is that denominator is growing at a faster pace than my numerator. So, I've got to get more firms, because what that does is, it will slowly start diluting the percentage goals. Not that we have less MBs, but the denominator's growing faster. So, I need to increase the number of certified firms. So, I have contracts that now may have a 20% MB goal and a 10% WBE goal, but based on the numbers that we have now, they may wind up being 18 and 8 because of that dilution. So, if we can get, you know, that influx of certified firms and encourage, and we've been, also been encouraging firms to get certified with the city so they can take advantage of Port Covington.
Right.
So, I, I will see, over the last six months and over the next year, a spike in the number of MBs and WBEs we have certified. I would like to see us get to, there's a possibility, based on these MDOT certified firms, that we can get to 1,500 certified firms in a very, very short period of time.
And that's great. I also want to add, and maybe this is somewhat of a challenge, that, you know, I don't know, it's dangerous thinking right, right here, but maybe there, there needs to be, you know, collaboration between, you know, BDC, Small Business Resource Center, and MBO as they come together for almost, you know, an incubator related to, you know, the work that's supposed to, you know, that infrastructure-type work. So, you know, that, that, those long-term projects that we know are going to be continually happening in, in the city, so that maybe a firm is not, you know, maybe not up to speed in the beginning, but as a result of going into our incubator process, you know, maybe five years down the line, three years down the line, they have gotten the capacity to now become a major player as it relates to infrastructure work. And part of that is, you know, not only building your internal capacity, but also assessing, you know, your submissions and, and whether, you know, you know, why it wasn't successful. You know, what, you know, what were the challenges? How do we overcome those challenges? Because quite frankly, you know, I'm just be honest, you know, I, I'm, I get tired of driving around the city and seeing all these Jersey plates and Pennsylvania plates on city work. And, and I hope I'm not the only one upset about it, because that means that somebody else is coming, they, they, is coming to work in Baltimore, staying in a hotel in Baltimore County, and taking our money back to Philadelphia.
Sure.
And when are we going to stop this?
Yeah, and, and part, and one of the other issues with that is, you know, you've got a small pool of contractors doing a lot of that work, which means less competition, which means potentially higher bid prices. I mean, you, you, you can drive around the city and see, you know, a handful of contractors doing the majority of the work. And with increased competition, we can only get better products and services and better prices. So, that's one of the issues with that. I'll let Paul speak to, you know, my office doesn't have resources to do business development per se, but I will say this, I'm very pleased and excited about the new mayor's initiative to combine the Small Business Resources and the Mayor's Office of Minority Business Development. I think, quite frankly, I have had some consternation about the focus and the direction of the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women's Business Development. I have not been silent about that. I, I have felt that office had needed, has needed direction, has needed leadership, and it hasn't necessarily had the appropriate direction and leadership in recent history. So, when it was suggested that they were going to bind the Small Business Resource Center and the Mayor's Office of Minority and Development under Paul Taylor, who I've worked with for years, I was very, very pleased. I mean, he certainly is competent, committed, and, and has the skill set to do exactly what you're trying to do, which is enhance the capacity and develop these firms. I mean, I, my office doesn't do that, and don't have the resources to do that, but it's absolutely critical, because as you know, you know, my programs, my job is to make every firm graduate because they've gotten so big.
Right.
And bring new ones in. And so, it's just important for all small businesses to have resources that they're just, they're just limited, you know? They, they are. I can't afford an attorney. I can't afford a CPA. I mean, the number one killer in small business is undercapitalization. I don't care how much talent you have, how hard you work, you know, what your dreams are, undercapitalization is a killer. And we've just got to build capacity, we've got to deal with the financing side, because without, without that, I don't care how good these businesses are and how hard they want to work, it's very, very difficult to be successful if you can't finance for 30, 60, 90 days, a, a, as we know. So, again, I'm looking forward to, to working with Paul even closer now, and you're absolutely right, you know, there was not a collaborative relationship. And I think, I know what my office does. It didn't seem clear that the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women's Business Development was 100% clear on what their, you know, what their wheelhouse was. But I'm confident that now that there will be a clear direction, and as always, I'm here to support that office in any way I can.
Okay. Thank you. I think I've beaten that enough, but, but as, as Mr. Taylor comes, that's why even yesterday, I was critical of the planning department when, when they came before us with the capital budget, that at some point, you know, our, our capital budget should reflect investment that's going to yield economic growth. And I, and I see investing in, in, in these firms as an opportunity to, to grow our city in, in a different way.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just let you know about a couple of things that we've been doing in that regard. So, over the last couple of years, the, the DPW's actually sponsored a program that we, we put on called the Local Contracted Development Program, that was specifically geared to providing the kind of capital, I mean, capacity-building programs around the consent decree program. And so, even up in last year, to 2016, we actually had a cohort group of about 21 companies that we walked through that process. All of them have some interest or have some capacity in doing underground utilities or some of the work associated with the consent decree work. So, over the last... So over the last couple of years, we have actually been very cognizant of that, and have put together programs that have been helping. And by the way, the programs have been taught by the primes who are doing some of that work. So, so we're trying to really build capacity in that area. The other thing is that there are MOUs for Port Covington and in Arbor East, specifically around mentoring. So we've had some mentoring programs, and also to provide some assistance to some of those contracts, and some of those are actually baked in as MOUs.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Stokes?
This is for Mr. Billups. I just have a question. February this year, I held a symposium with the Association of Black Charities on African-American wealth and homeownership, which was, we invited Federal Reserve there, because the data showed that most of the banks are not lending to African-Americans on homeownership and wealth. And my question to you is, is your office able to work through with some of the banks, mainly Wells Fargo, who discriminate against African-Americans? I look at Oliver, there's a lot of development going on in Broadway, but there are speculators. And the reason why they're speculators is because a lot of the community associations are not certified, become CDCs. Because if they become the CDCs, that money stays in the community, they can develop four or five houses. So my question to you, will your office be working closely with the banks to train some of the community associations, become CDCs? Because that's important, that we don't have to keep what my colleague said about, we're seeing people from out of town working, people from out of town, general contractors. We have to make sure that we make sure we train African-Americans to become general contractors. Because a lot of times, when you're sub, you don't have no say-so in anything. So my suggestion to you, will your office be working with a lot of those local banks in Baltimore to train our community associations, become CDCs, so they can develop, do development in their own community? The money stays there, the money goes back to the community association, and they can provide services to the community that they serve.
All right. That's an excellent point. I did a presentation with, two presentations within the last six months, with PNC Bank to talk about lending opportunities for small businesses. That's not necessarily my office's bailiff. I'll let Paul speak to kind of the bigger issue.
So we, the, there's been a couple of initiatives in Baltimore recently that have been looking at, how do we take some of the lenders in the area, and how do we put them with potential borrowers and contractors? One of the challenges, and this is, there's something called the Plum Initiative, which is the Millikan Institute and SBA have been looking at alternative lending programs. Plum meaning the Partnership for Lending in Under-served Markets. The idea around that is they've analyzed what the borrowing patterns are, and SBA in particular have looked at their lending and said that we're only, you know, less than 3% of our lending goes to the African-American community. And part of it is because how is that done? One of them, one of the problems is, most lending is debt, is based on debt, is based on equity. And those, the equity in African-American families is less than $1,700, and so if you don't have enough equity, you can't borrow. So what Plum is trying to put in front of everybody is, how do we put together additional lending resources that don't have those kind of requirements, or we reduce the barriers to entry for some of those developers and small businesses?
I'm not talking about individuals, I'm talking about-
To developers, right.
Development, I'm talking about community associations. There's a lot of community associations in the African-American community that don't have CDCs.
Right.
Would your office, along with the bank, be able to train them so they be certified? I'm not talking about individual African-Americans, I'm talking about, there's a lot of development going on in my district-
Right.
...in the 13th District, and every time I look around, there's no African-Americans that's part of the development piece that do the development.
So-
I'm asking you, can your office, I can identify some community associations for you that don't, do not have a CDC.
Right. So we worked with someone at the Federal Reserve who's actually looked at that and looked at the CDCs as an option. We've also been working with one of the CDFIs in Baltimore to try to put together some resources to help do that very purpose. But yeah, we can look into that.
Yeah, because you know, the part of the bank is supposed to be the community reinvestment.
Mm-hmm.
But they're not doing it. So as soon as this is over, I'd love to get you a list of the community groups.
Thank you.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was actually just talking about yesterday, Mr. Taylor, on this exact subject around, you know, the scale and scope of projects coming through and the lack of minority enterprises. But also just was hoping that you could talk a little bit about the class, the coursework that's taught at the center around helping minority contractors get government contracts? Because I think that's an important piece of this puzzle, is that capacity building. Could you just talk a little bit about it? I was impressed.
Yeah. So, thank you for that question. So the Local Contractor Development Program, which was sponsored by DPW in the last couple of years, has been focused on a couple of things. One is, how, you know, how do contractors go after the contracts? How do they manage those contracts? We've had classes like bidding and estimating, we've had classes around bonding, we've had classes around even the certification process. Courtney and some other members of the cabinet have come and actually spoken to these groups about ways to engage with city government in terms of contracting. So we've looked at all aspects of the contracting business, from going after the contract, managing those contracts, getting paid, putting together, we have a lawyer who comes and talks about the contracting between the prime and the subs, and what that should look like. So those are all the subject matter, the areas that we've addressed in these classes.
And is there, and can you talk a little bit about if there are opportunities to collaborate? And that was the one piece that I mentioned yesterday, is there an opportunity to create a pipeline from this office to that, to those coursework, to also to other agencies? So if there's like particular contractors that may come out of the class, or potential contractors that come out, that maybe we can kind of create these direct lines-
Yes.
...you know, to the job sites?
Yeah. So the Local Contractor Development Program is one, but we also had something called the Vendor Development Program. What we were doing was taking all the newly certified companies with the city, and had them go through a seven-week class that we identified all of the different agencies that they could contract with, what it takes to get paid, you know, sending in the right documentation, how to become a prime on some of those contracts, or a sub on some of those contracts. So we've done that, we're going to re-initiate that Vendor Development Program also.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's great work. And just like I said, if there's opportunity to kind of get the word out a little bit, and hopefully this transition in your office will help with that. So I think, it's a lot, I didn't know about it, I'm also not in that world, so, you know, obviously I'm limited in that. But just the hope is that, you know, this, more folks take advantage of it and kind of blow the doors off. Because I agree with my colleague that between 21st Century Schools, buildings, and the consent decree with DPW, there's a lot, Port Covington, when that comes online, there's a lot of opportunity, I think, for local contractors to make an impact.
Councilman, one of the other things, the Mayor has been really persistent in asking her agencies why bids are going out at certain sizes? Because I think, as Councilman Pinkett mentioned, you do see on a lot of these larger jobs, out-of-state companies winning, because the smaller Baltimore firms don't have the bonding capacity. So government can help on that. We don't have to put out, you know, nine-figure bids. If it can break apart into smaller chunks, some of our local firms participate. The Mayor has really been pushing everybody, I know Paul's been involved in that. How do we change local procurement, just city government procurement, to allow local firms a better chance of competing? Because, you know, you're still going to have the existing procurement requirements until that changes. But if the bid sizes are smaller, local firms may have a better chance.
Understood. I just wanted to also speak to the fact that we've also been encouraging some of the, our institutions, hospitals, and some of the larger institutions, the schools in the area, to begin looking at how do they do procurement with local businesses, not necessarily have to go outside. And again, I too have been, you know, challenged by, when I go around the city and I see everybody else's license plates doing work, and our contractors are sitting around looking for business. So we've been looking at, how do we engage the institutions, the hospitals, the schools that are in this area, to do business with our businesses in the community? So that's, that's an initiative that has taken off. There's a couple of graduates out of that, Be Local is one of those graduates out of that initiative also.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Just one last question, Mr. Cole. Is Will Beckford here? Sorry, I didn't notice him with the tie on.
Oh, that is Will.
With a tie on.
Mr. Cole, Mr. Taylor, thank you very much. We are going to go into recess until 10:30 AM sharp, at which time we have the State's Attorney and the Sheriff.